Welcome everyone to the main meeting of the Calgary Police Commission. I would like to call this meeting to order and ask that everyone ensure their microphones are muted until you need to speak. My name is Sean Cornet and I'm the Chair of the Commission. Present from the Commission today are Commissioners Kampo Sadiqi, Marilyn North-Pagan, Susan Mallon, Tim Lynch Proctor, Heather Campbell, Theresa Rossell, Pam Arneck, Tidie Tsang, Jeff French, and Councillor Courtney Walcott. The Calgary Police Service representatives are led by Chief Constable Mark Newfelt. Chief, would you please introduce those who expect to speak during today's meeting?
Thanks Chair, I can make that for the public session. It will be Inspector Curtis Olson, member of the Arrest Processing section.
Thank you very much. Thank you everyone for being here. For those not familiar with our role, the Calgary Police Commission is a body of community members appointed by the City Council to provide independent citizen governance and oversight of the Calgary Police Service on the apple of Calgary. To protect the political neutrality of the police, Alberta's Police Act requires that the police chief report directly to us and that we give direction to the service through the chief, police policies, monitoring of the complaints process, and approval of how the police budget is spent. Today is one of eight public meetings we have each year to openly discuss police governance and oversight matters with the service's leadership and to hear from the public. In addition to these meetings, there are also private monthly committee meetings where commissioners dedicate time to work more directly with the service on various matters that cannot be discussed publicly. To open our meeting, I would like to acknowledge that this call is taking place on the traditional territory of the Mitisstapi, made up of the Zigziga, Pekani, and Kainai First Nations, the Yrehe, Nakota First Nations comprised of the Chiniqui, Berespa, and Western First Nations, and Tsutseena First Nation. These are the people who made a treaty with the Crown, forming Treaty VII Territory. The city of Calgary is also homeland to the historic Northwest Métis and to Métis Nation of Alberta Region III. We are committed to doing our part to address the inequity and intergenerational trauma caused by past and current wrongs to support reconciliation with all indigenous people in our community. The Calgary Police Commission also condemns racism and prejudice in all forms and is committed to being anti-racist. We stand in solidarity with our colleagues, families, and citizens who are Black, Indigenous, or other people of color. Going to talk just a minute about the meeting format today. For those of you joining us for the first time, allow me to provide a brief overview of the meeting format. The public session of this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on our website so we can make it available to those unable to attend. We're also doing this in a hybrid format, so we have some people online and some people in the room here. There will be several presentations from the Calgary Police Service, Commission members, and Commission staff. Commissioners will then have the chance to ask questions or make comments by raising their hands in Zoom or if they're in the room in person. Once we have completed the presentations, we will move to the public participation portion of the meeting. And anyone who registered to speak before noon today will then be called on by name and will have a chance to either ask a question or make a presentation for our consideration. Following the public participation session, we will close the public portion of the meeting and ask the media and chief to remain on the line with me for a brief media availability. I would also like to add that this is our first meeting back in person following the last two years of virtual meetings during the pandemic. We are returning using a hybrid model for our meetings as the level of public interest and participation in our meetings has outgrown our boardroom and we want to ensure that our meetings remain as accessible as possible. Given this is our first time through, we expect there will be some bumps in the road and we thank you all in advance for your patience. To start our agenda items, I will now call for declarations of pecuniary interest or conflict of interest from the Commissioners. Hearing no declarations, I will now ask for approval of the agenda. Does any member of the Commission wish to request an amendment to the agenda? Seeing none, I will now ask for, sorry, hearing no request to move agenda items, I'll declare both the agenda and the consent agenda approved as presented. I would like to start my Chair's Report this month by acknowledging how much pressure the members of the Calgary Police Service have been under since our last Commission meeting. Our city has seen a deeply concerning number of shootings, random assaults and stabbings at sea train stations, a number of women sexually assaulted by strangers, and property crimes increasing. The random nature of these crimes has left Calgarians shaken, but nothing more so than the tragic death of Angela Mackenzie. Our thoughts are all with the victims of these crimes and our hearts are especially heavy for the Mackenzie family in this time of unimaginable grief. While nothing can undo the damage, hurt, and loss these events have caused for those involved, we are grateful to all the members of the service who have worked tirelessly to identify and locate suspects and bring them to justice. Over and over again, we have seen that our city is blessed to have police officers with the professionalism, expertise, and dedication to protect our community and bring victims and their families some level of justice. I was honored to attend the Beacons of Hope event with a few other representatives from the Commission two weekends ago to show our gratitude for all of the members of the Calgary Police Service do for our community. Looking back on all that's happened in the last two months, I feel it's also important to express that gratitude here on behalf of the Commission. Thank you. The past two months have also been a busy time for our Commission members. We were proud last week to welcome 26 new police officers to the service at class 240 graduation last week. We were also thankful we could participate in a community safety town hall organized by the North of McKnight Community Society, where we listen to Calgarians' concerns around the crime trends in our community. Work also continues to improve the relationship between the Commission, the service, and members of the Calgary Police Service. We have had several productive meetings where we've discussed how we can work better together. Implementation of the Commission's directions that officers no longer wear the thin blue line patch continues and we now have affirmed 8/31 as being when on-duty members of the service will be required to remove the patch. I also want to once again say that our decision on the thin blue line patch was in no way an expression of non-confidence in the members of the Calgary Police Service. The Commission and the community value those who serve and strongly support visually honoring the fallen officers who gave their lives to protect our city. Calgarians and the Commission are grateful for the outstanding work the sworn and civilian members of the service do every day to keep us safe. The Commission also does not question whether Calgary's police officers wear the symbol with good intentions or to express positive things. Our unanimous decision was always based simply on the symbol having mixed meanings to a significant number of people in our city. We look forward to continuing conversations with the members of the service on this and the concerns they have raised. I would be remiss today if I did not mention that it is International Missing Children's Day. With the Amber Alert system in our province, it's great at helping find some of the children that go missing every year. There are many who do not meet that criteria. Today is a good day for all Calgarians to look at other ways they can also be alerted to missing children, such as the Missing Children Society of Canada's rescue app. Today is also the second anniversary of the murder of George Floyd. His death at the hands of a police officer led to so many important and difficult conversations in policing, including here in Calgary. Our Commission is proud of the anti-racism and police reform work that grew out of the summer of 2020. We're also thankful to the service for all their anti-racism and reconciliation work so far and appreciate your ongoing commitment to delivering on the promises made to Calgarians. There is a lot of work left to do, but today is also a day that we can reflect back on all that has already been done. With that, I conclude my Chair's Report. We will now move on to the first formal presentation of today's meeting. The service will be sharing with the Commission and the public about its virtual opioid dependency program. Chief, please go ahead with your presentations.
Thank you Chair for the comprehensive introduction and certainly circling around all the challenging issues as well as the good issues that have been going on over the last couple of months, so we really do appreciate that. I'm going to hand it over to Deputy Chief Toffick, he's going to introduce our speakers in relation to the virtual opioid dependency program and the work that's being done in the service around public safety for those who are dependent on opioids.
Yeah, thanks very much Chief and thanks Chair and members of the Commission. Today's presentation, we wanted to bring forward some of the work that's been going on to address community harm in relation to the opioid crisis in the province and broader community. We have Inspector Curtis Olson, who is the inspector in charge of our traffic and arrest processing section, who will walk through some of the initiatives that we've been partnering on to address this. So I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you Deputy and thank you Chief and it's exciting to be here this afternoon to share in person some of the exciting things that we're doing within the traffic and arrest processing section. This particular presentation is going to focus on the virtual opioid dependency program at the arrest processing Spire facility in northwest Calgary. Myself and Sergeant Sergeant Blake Hebert wasn't able to be here today, but he's an administrative staff sergeant in that role that partners with me. I wanted to talk a little bit about at the start, really the virtual opioid dependency program is a relatively new partnership with the Government of Alberta and it provides people who are suffering with addictions an option to have a virtual voluntary and private consultation with a medical physician at the site of Spire in northwest Calgary. So those people that come into our custody, we do talk a lot about in arrest process, the importance of two things, being professional, respectful, those are guiding principles for us, and the importance of the highest level of care and custody. And this allows us to meet with those people that are in need. Typically, we'll have just under 10,000 people every year coming through our facility that are from all parts and walks of life. And I say that very intentionally, that they are from walks of life and that they at times do suffer with addiction. In the past, we really haven't had those opportunities to aid them. But what this looks like for someone to diligently walk through the door, it allows someone to, when they're experiencing withdrawal symptoms, we have our full-time paramedical group that's our 24/7/365, allows them to have that consultation and offer that opportunity to have a drug called, it's an evidence-based pharmaceutical called Suboxone, and allows them to have that virtual volunteer private consultation with a physician. And approximately 80% of the people that we've been seeing through our door, the programs that have been through that have been taking, that have been experiencing these withdrawal symptoms, they are taking advantage of that. And so it's been started in quarter four, yeah, Q4 of last year. We're still in the foundational stages of it, but we had very, very good results. Essentially, it mitigates, number one, putting the person at the center of it, it allows them to get what they need and takes them from maybe a nine of agitation right down to a one. It allows them to start that process of recovery, which is really so important to make sure they're getting connected to what they need in our city. It also provides an opportunity for officers to have that risk mitigated so we don't have to have heightened situations without reason. So again, we've had excellent, excellent results with it. And the lens that I've talked about, the care and custody, that's really, this supports that. What's on the horizon, we have, the Government of Alberta has also put forward a, and I'm going to just click right here through there. We're going through the slide screen as we go. But at the end of the day, there's an addiction-focused healthcare provider that's going to be helping people get connected to what they need in our city. We're in the process of working with, close with Alberta Health Services on that and have an evaluation that's going to be likely through one of our universities to ensure that we have a really solid look at this at the year coming forward. That's really a snapshot. At the end of the day, I know that it may generate some questions around this, but it really does tie into the service, the oral service and Chief's goal of really heightening the highest level of care and custody and ensuring that on a provincial standard basis, that we're very much aligned with Edmonton Police Service as well. And at this time, I know a little bit for conversation, just now I'll turn it over to Deputy Toffick for the next one on Doors.
All right, thanks Curtis. And there's a number of initiatives that have been undertaken by the province of Alberta, specifically Alberta Health, to address, I guess, a wider audience around these issues. One of them is a digital overdose response system, which is an app that was developed by an Alberta company in coordination with the government of Alberta. We had some conversations with the Director in Charge of Strategic Planning and Communications with Addictions and Mental Health Branch late last year as they moved forward with this application that they were launching. And what that application is intended to do is to reach those who may use opioids on their own in the residences and be subject to higher risk because they are using alone. So with that app that can be downloaded onto their phones regardless of which platform you're on, it sets a timer so that they notify for when they're using an opioid or substance like that. And if they do not turn it off or adjust it after prescribed period of time, it sets an alert. That alert forms a call to Stars Emergency Response Centre to then re-contact the person. And of course confidentiality is of the utmost importance in this because we want to avoid the fear of not using it that could come with that. And Stars will try to re-contact them. If they cannot re-contact them, then they put in a call to emergency services to respond, to check on a potential overdose. So this application was launched first in the Calgary area in the summer of 2021 and it's currently available now in Edmonton, Calgary, and South House zones. They're working on expanding it. They've taken a bit of a measured approach in that, just to work out any issues that they might see. Basically, it was aimed at those, you know, who would be using by themselves in their residential locations. As of April 2022, there were over 12,000 visits to the Doors app site and numerous downloads and registered users. They have to register and set up their own account for it. We did have discussions with Alberta Health Services around, you know, the potential of police coming into that and people maybe not wanting to use the app if they feared that we're going to come in and they're using narcotics. So there's a very measured approach as far as how we would engage. Ultimately, it's public safety first. So that kind of gives an overview of the Doors application. We have given feedback to them as they've rolled out that initiative and I think they are seeking to expand it, but certainly will defer that to the province to speak to that. I know Curtis spoke about the virtual overdose prevention program, which is, or opioid overdose prevention program, which has been launched in Edmonton and here. So certainly are looking to connect people with resources to support diversion from addictions. And with that, I'll probably just get on to the topic of naloxone, nasal naloxone kits, which the province has also reached out to us to offer kits that our members could then distribute to those in need in the community. Approximately three weeks ago, we had 500 kits provided to our organization, which have been disseminated throughout all of the districts. Of course, we have an increased number made available in District 1 downtown and at the Stephen Avenue Safety Hub for access for our members to provide to people. It's nasal naloxone, stuff that you can actually get through the pharmacies anyways, but just when we're having those connection points with community, if our members have access to these, they can maybe give them that opportunity to avoid an overdose. Building on that, the virtual opioid dependency program and Doors, there's information brochures and cards that have been provided to all the district offices, to NAPS Arrest Processing section as well, to provide to people who might have a dependency so that they can seek to access their own resources as these things are readily available. We just want to make sure we connect people to them and give them every opportunity to get some assistance with that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Curtis. Any last remarks from you Curtis?
Yeah Deputy, I think just as you mentioned this suite of, I think a lot of a suite of healthcare, right from Doors apps right through to what we're doing, the virtual dependency program through to what's on the horizon with our mental, our addiction-focused healthcare. It really is an exciting time for police service to be involved with this. We're really cutting, on some cutting edge and really helping people. And I see it on a daily basis where people really are, they are having that opportunity to connect to the physician in his VODDPs. It really is, it's really on the cusp of telling people who really do want to change their life, it allows them to take those next steps. So we're a very exciting time as a police service, looking for some great results with it. And it's a reflective again of our service commitment to innovation and various hard work, very hard-working officers that are there to again, heighten the highest level of care and custody.
So I think with that Chair, we're happy to take any questions and we can go from there.
All right, thank you for that. That was very interesting and truly very, very creative, very innovative and a real, I think a real focus of community policing and really helping people get to where they need to go, which is awesome. So I will turn it over to Commission members for any questions you might have. And it's hard to see who's first. Okay, we'll go Commissioner Campbell first and then Commissioner Walcott and then Commissioner Sadiqi and then I'll get to people also online because Commissioner North-Pagan would also like to ask a question. So Commissioner Campbell.
I'm hoping that this, oh, I think it's working well. First time I've pressed the button. Thank you for that presentation. The opioid crisis is exactly that, a crisis and it's all of the adjectives of heartbreaking, but critical. In the discussion of the Doors program, you mentioned the level of confidentiality that's provided through the app. But I find that with the distribution of the naloxone kits, and particularly I'm quite interested in the distribution of the nasal naloxone kit, the confidentiality isn't maintained. I have an naloxone kit because I live in the core and the inner city of Calgary and I think it's important as someone who's trained in first aid to have one. But when I went to my pharmacist to obtain it, there was, I had to show ID and provide all kinds of information that I'm not necessarily certain achieves a level of confidentiality. So I'm wondering if you have any understanding of what is being, why there is such confidentiality with obtaining an naloxone kit to contribute to the best of our skills in our own way in with this opioid crisis.
Thanks for the question Commissioner. I can't speak for Alberta Health Services and their, you know, the criteria that they set for tracking that. I assume it's just to control, it's costly and just to track it so that they know where it's being issued, et cetera. I think a lot of people are carrying it, not necessarily for themselves, but to help others and I think that's a key aspect. So from a stigma perspective, you know, anyone can walk in there, grab one and the perception isn't that you might be using opioids. It's, no, you want to help and intervene on the crisis. So I think that's a key aspect. For our members, the ones that are assigned to us to distribute, there is no tracking of who we are giving those to. So we are not taking, writing down who or putting in a report around who they're given to. Truly, it's designed when we see or encounter someone who needs it at that time to give it to them to say, hey, stay safe. And hopefully with some other educational information around Doors and VODP, we can even put them on a different trajectory. So it really starts that conversation and dialogue.
Brilliant, thank you. Councillor Walcott.
It's, thank you Chair, Commissioner Campbell, I had the exact same question around data collection. So I'm going to kind of like just pivot to a different part of it. You mentioned Deputy Chief Toffick about the app and specifically the data collection angle of the app there. From some of the work that I've done with the Calgary Home and Foundation and just like pitch, pit counts, we tend to see like, like I say we, as if I've done one. I've been told that one of the biggest challenges of pit counts is just any name collection at all. Sometimes people want to resist just having their name on a record. I'm curious if you could maybe just dive a little bit deeper into the cell phone, kind of the app and the data collection that would go around it. I would assume that there's probably not, probably not putting in too much information in general to utilize it, but even do you have much information on like some of the background app information that it might be collecting or if that's something that's been discussed?
Yeah, I can probably speak to it Commissioner at a very high level. Of course, I don't know the inner workings behind the scenes, but I do know that privacy was a key aspect of their consideration and development of the app because there's no point even launching it if people are, you know, suspicious that information is going to be shared inappropriately. So I know that the steps to go in and actually register and download in specific to the phone number, you, when you're in the app, my understanding is that you put in the location so that if you are unable to respond, emergency services can reach you. We need to be able to find the person. It does get into some challenges around altitude. If you think about a high-rise and, you know, where someone might be even with a lat-long GPS, the ability to actually find out where they are. So they are allowed to put in a certain amount of information into the app and it is totally voluntary. So it's truly at their own discretion around that. And ultimately through the Stars application, they will engage the right emergency services to respond. So typically you're going to see AHS and FIRE. We might respond if they are unable to get into a premises, but even our, you know, I didn't want to see that the police maybe responding would be a barrier. We were mindful of how many are we going to see around these alarms that we'd have to respond to because calls for service and what's the right agency to respond. So we have had those conversations with Alberta Health Services too, to make sure that we optimize the use for the right reasons. And I think they've been very methodical around their approach on how they communicate. And when you go into the application and anyone can go online and check the app out, you can see what the terms of engagement are on it and so that there's nothing hidden around what we would get. And we can't get authorization, as a law enforcement agency, I can't go get data in behind the scenes without judicial authorization, nor would we. We know the spirit of this is really to help people. So that's been the focus.
No, that's actually like, that's really important context, especially around the voluntary nature of the information. Like that's really, I think that's like a core tenet of how that program's successful. So it's really good to hear. Just as a segue, kind of follow-up as well with, has there been, I know it's still in the early foundational stages. Like we're two quarters deep. Has there been much discussion of partnerships with others like street teams that be the change? Just the other groups that might be able to actually spread some of this education out there in that early work with people who are still, who are using?
You bet. I think that's one of their strategies to get as many all-hands-on-deck to address it. So I'm sure they've reached out to those partners as well. We've talked about other city partners like transit and such where we see, you know, a higher degree of prevalence around use and potential overdose. So those conversations are being had.
Absolutely. That's okay. Final question and this one's, I might be getting into a little bit of political weeds on the specifics, but you mentioned that this is a partnership with Alberta Health and I was actually just curious, is that a partnership from like Alberta Health government policy side or is it Alberta Health Services? Just so that I can maybe understand the origin of some of this work, like is this government-directed or is this healthcare field-directed partnerships?
I think it's a bit of a combination because we do have, there is grant funding that's associated with the supports that are provided in Arrest Processing as an example. Grant funding available to support medical professionals to be there to provide that guidance. So that from a funding perspective is there, but then just from a policy perspective around how they're handling, you know, opioid, the opioid crisis, I think there's aspects to that around making sure that they are fulsome around all the communities that they're connecting with. So the Doors app is a good example of that. Seventy percent of the overdose deaths are not in the core or in other locations and it's important to not just put all your eggs in one basket. So I think they've taken a multifaceted approach that way.
No, I really appreciate your answers today. Thank you so much everyone.
Commissioner Sadiqi. Thank you Chair. Thank you both for the information. I appreciate it. So that leads a little bit into my question. I had a question regarding the funding. So is the funding a one-time grant that was given or is this ongoing funding? And number two, with the kits, will there be more kits coming from the government? Or is this something that the service needs to now budget into as we go into the future?
Great question. Thanks for the question Commissioner. As for the initial kits, the rollout of the 500, that was our initial distribution. We'll be talking with We'll be talking with Alberta Health around, you know, what's the next step? What's the next stage? I think they'll be looking to maybe assess that. For the funding on the grant funding, basically it's for addiction focused health staff in arrest processing. That gives us just over basically a year of funding to get those in place. And there will be an evaluation component that is part of the grant funding covers an external evaluation of that program. So they want to see, is it helping? Is it working? Which I think is a good approach. And then they'll probably make decisions from there. But this is really a first, I think, as far as having that support mechanism available and accessible right in an arrest processing facility. Which not everyone comes through there, but the ones that do, if we can have an impact there, not just from VODP, but with that additional support, we're hopeful that we can impact that in a greater way.
Thank you. I think it would be great for us to know as you're going through the evaluation, if you would like that to continue. Just because as we're having conversations on the municipal level with budget as well as the province, it would be great for the commission to share that information with officials. So if there is a way for you to bring that back to us, I think that's super important.
Absolutely.
Commissioner North again, please go ahead.
Well, actually Counselor Walcott asked my question about Alberta Health Services and the partnership. I'm just curious to know when the, the timeline as to when the position's going to be filled? And when can we expect to see this, in this healthcare worker in place doing the job?
So our addiction focused healthcare, we just received a grant April 1st. So we are in daily weekly conversations with Alberta Health Services to provide those to healthcare workers for us. It's really in the, in the midst of it on a daily basis here into the weekly basis. They've actually just this past week said they're, they're going to provide those individuals to us. Certainly the finance, the character of finance and then reporting that grant funding to make that, make that happen is in place. But that's, we anticipate at the, at the latest, a Q2, end of Q2, that they'll be in place to your, to your question there online. And that's going to be exciting because it's going to, it's going to set us on a path towards looking at a full evaluation. That's really in support of a UVA or UFC and we're, we're, we're working very diligently to make that happen. So we're positioning not only our, our people, but even services in the commission, to your point around making that form decisions for down the road. And we're, we're on, we're on the path to make that happen. But just receiving the emails of yesterday saying that that's a, that they're, they're securing that and looking to identify those individuals.
Thank you so much. That's great work that we're going to see ahead. Thanks. Back to you Chair.
Thank you. One last quick sort of wrap up question. I'm curious about the evaluation. Who is responsible for getting the evaluating in place and often evaluations sort of starts at the beginning of program? And I'm hoping that you can get some interim results and things like that more quickly than just watching the whole program run out. But can you talk a little bit about the evaluation?
Certainly. It's so important to have that evaluation piece right at the very onset. So we've given the parameters for what that evaluation should, should cover all those key, key performance indicators, if you will. As far as what that looks like so that we can have a, an external, and that's where even our academic partnership, if you will, with UVA or UFC, supported by AHS in Alberta and Calgary as far as the coordination for that. So we're hoping to have even these places, even though our virtual opioid defensive program has been up and running since the Q4 of last year, we are really on the cusp of the next part of that, this suite of healthcare, if you will, and to the value resource. We're anticipating that there'll be some, there'll be academic support for that. If I could just add on there as well, I know Deputy George is briefly reporting, we're doing so many different things at arrest processing for inclusivity and for just ensuring that, you know, everyone, everyone is really treated professionally and respectfully. I know that if you have not had that opportunity to visit arrest processing, extend that my welcome to you. At some point down the road Deputy and Top and the Chief to, to open those doors up. So you can really see some of the excellent work that's happening there. And I use those words very intentionally because when I, when I, when I, when I continue to chat with some of our edits in the background there, these types of programs really are, they are game changers and they're life changers for people. And I think with this, the next part of the addiction focused healthcare, we're going to see excellent things happen. Not only for the, the anecdotal aspects of that evaluation, but the empirical, the, all those aspects that go with it. The other entry piece around that, which is so important for the decision making.
Thank you very much. And I would just, just to summarize and just reinforce that last point, that'll be really helpful for us to know as part of the narrative for how the police service serves the whole city in terms of longer term sustainable kind of interventions that, that that's something that you can continue to look for those good stories and bring them forward. So thank you very much and thank you for your presentation. It's awesome. Great. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to three regular reports that we get. There are three of them and we'll run through all of the three reports and presentations and then open it up for questions. So there's pandemic impacts, crime update and anti racism. So if we could start first please with the financial operational impacts of the COVID epidemic.
Yeah, thanks Chair. You'll know that in the past, we've reported on both the internal and the external impacts with respect to the pandemic. And even though I think the impacts have been less observable, certainly the pandemic is grounded on here. So today's report is going to go over to Deputy Chief Topic, but we're going to focus on the internal or sorry, the external operational impacts. And I'll hand it over to him to take that one away.
Thanks Chief. And I know we provided a report that outlined some of the key aspects that we wanted to highlight this month. As noted before, in, in April, there was a slight decrease in citywide disorder activity compared to the five-year average. So we did see a bit of a dip there. But year to date, the social disorder activity has increased slightly about a thousand calls for service. And in the report, it speaks to which types of demographics of those types of calls. As far as the crime trends that we've been seeing, and I will get into a bit more detail with the crime report that we do, but they, they continue to be reduced in some areas with a slight trend to return to the normal average zone that we typically would see in a pre-pandemic year. This includes the break in enters, both residential and commercial. We've seen those kind of trend more toward normal theft of auto and car prowling. To the end of April, vehicle crime is currently at eight percent below the five-year average. So that is still trending a little lower. As reported previously, the reported domestic violence continues to show a reduction. However, the domestic reporting is continuing to be increased as to the five-year average. That trend has been continuing since July of 2021. Violent crime that is non-domestic in nature has continued to trend with the five-year average. One of the key things that we've noted or that's been noticed by our analysts is that they've been highly correlated with both temperature and the amount of economic activity associated with reopening. So as we see warmer weather, as we see more venues accessible, we've seen those, those types of occurrences increase. Publicly generated calls for service, we're monitoring that as well. They are continuing to trend upward. We did see for a large part of the main portion of the pandemic that they had dipped as far as public generated calls, but they are moving more toward a five-year average, what we've been seeing. Officer generated calls are somewhat lower, which is sort of not unexpected with an increase in the public generated calls. We would expect to see that. With respect to the protests and what we've seen over the last month since our last discussion on this topic. Of course they've continued and we've seen the emergence of other large scale events happen. So we're managing multiple things at one time. The Court of Queen's Benches Junction that was previously obtained by the city had been lifted. And as such, we've been paying very close attention to that activity, which is predominantly main, been located at City Hall and right around that area. And we continue to monitor that. We did engage the business and community stakeholders in the Beltline area again on April 28th. And that was twofold, one around that portion, but also around the red anticipated red mile activity in relation to the NHL playoffs, which we've been managing throughout. And also even with the away games, given the opening of the red lot and a different approach to, to providing it an experience for Calgarians in relation to that. And as mentioned, we have had a number of large scale events over the past several weekends that have had us to use our resources across those various events. And those have gone fairly successfully. So we're paying close attention to that. And as we plan to move forward, we're looking at things such as the Calgary Stampede, the Stampede Parade, which will be back to a very similar form as it was in previous years. So we're gearing up for that. So I'll leave it there. And I know we're going to go through a number of reports and then we'll take questions.
Thanks Deputy Topic for that one. We'll move then to 5.3, which is the first of two crime updates. And we split those up between Deputy Chief Cook, who's got the Bureau of Investigative Support, and then back to Deputy Chief Topic from the community-based policing standpoint. So Paul, maybe hand to you first and then, and then flow right into Chad after.
Thank you Chief. Good afternoon Chair and Commission members. I'm here to provide a crime summary on behalf of the Bureau of Investigative Support. Corwin, I believe a report came in advance, so I'll try to cover things off at a high level. Today I wanted to focus on our response to shootings and gun crime as we had a higher than anticipated number of shootings in April and the early part of May. I'll also talk about our efforts to curb commercial robberies and the success we've seen. I can then also provide some information related to other major crimes that are investigated by the Bureau. Addressing shootings and gun crime continues to be a priority for the service with 18 shootings in April and another eight between May 1st and May 24th. The year-to-date total at the end of yesterday, May 24th, was 62 shootings. This is an increase of 107% compared to the same time period in 2022, sorry, 2021. Notably, we have four targeted shootings that resulted in deaths. These are numbers we know are concerning to the public as well as ourselves. I want to be clear that members of Carriery Police Service are working tirelessly to investigate these crimes, to hold those responsible for these shootings accountable. To better address the increase in shootings, we have coordinated existing CPS resources, specifically reorganizing part of our organization to better align intelligence and investigative resources for better coordination. Several areas of the service also contribute to investigations, enforcement, suppression and prevention. I can tell you those are daily activities through and across the service. I must stress that even with the work from several areas of the service, stopping, stopping shootings and gun violence requires our entire community to come together. We continue to take opportunities through communications and community engagement events to talk about how gun violence puts our entire community at risk. I believe Deputy McCallum will be prepared to address that if required. We need help from family, friends and loved ones to ensure those walking around illegally carrying guns, real or not, are not traumatizing victims or becoming victims themselves. We continue to encourage community members to share home surveillance video with police if there is a shooting and to report suspicious behavior and vehicles. I can tell you unequivocally, the community is a big part of our success collectively. And we have seen that in recent weeks with information that has been provided to advance investigations. So I thank our members of our community and the public for calling us. Though we're speaking about April prime trends, we'd be remiss if we did not talk about a recent example of reckless gun crime resulting in the death of an innocent 40-year-old mother of five, Angela McKenzie, as referenced by the Chair. This is what we always fear, an innocent person being caught in a conflict. This tragic loss of life is not acceptable in any community and most certainly not within Calgary. Senseless acts of violence like this can have a broad reaching effect on our community. Everyone should be able to safely go about their business without fear of finding themselves victimized by these incidents. We continue to seek the whereabouts of Talal Amr, wanted in connection with Ms. McKenzie's death. And we will continue to pursue all leads and hold accountable those that may be helping him evade police. Our condolences continue to go to the family and friends of Ms. McKenzie. I'll move quickly to commercial robberies. We saw marginally fewer commercial robberies this period compared to last month, which we believe is the result of police operations that specifically address convenience store and pharmacy robberies. There were 203 commercial robberies between January 1st and May 24th, 27% of which we classified as take, takeover style robberies, which we've described to the commission in past meetings. Commercial robberies are an ongoing trend. Over time, the offenders have changed and so too have the targeted businesses. From cell phone and cannabis stores to pharmacy and convenience store robberies. They are either financially motivated or are targeted to obtain prescription drugs. For pharmacy robbery specifically, to May 24th, we had 25 pharmacy robberies. Perhaps worth noting is that we only had one pharmacy robbery in the month of April. And now are up to 10 in the month of May with five occurring over the past weekend alone. We considered the low rate of incidents in April a success, but recognize that the number of commercial robberies can have been slow along with the type of businesses targeted. As a result of the overall leveling off of pharmacy robberies in our city, we were able to conclude a major operation that had been initiated last summer. We also credit our involvement with the provincial pharmacy robbery task force that was struck to focus on strategic crime prevention efforts. This task force involved our law enforcement partners as well as members of the Alberta College of Pharmacy. Members met once a month and are currently working on target targeting and crime prevention measures for pharmacies province-wide. Certainly, commercial robberies are challenging for our service. Resourcing challenges can hinder investigative efforts. Once one group is investigated and charges are laid, another group committing similar offenses will be identified. We find that there can be a cycle of these types of crimes. In many cases, offenders are released by the courts with conditions which are breached soon thereafter and may also involve offenders committing further robberies. We will continue to monitor commercial robberies and adjust our response accordingly. Moving to homicides. We are now sitting at 12 homicides through the year with four occurring in March or in April and the most recent happening on May 10. Our average by the end of April is 6.4 homicides, indicating we're almost double the average in 2022. Our average for May is 2.6, but as, as of May 18th, we had one homicide this month. Our homicide clearance rate for 2022 is currently at 67%, with eight out of the 12 homicides cleared by charge this year. The four files that remain uncleared were all shooting homicides and all were motivated by organized crime and/or drugs. Overall, our homicide numbers fluctuate from year to year. It's difficult to determine exactly why we see homicides occurring when they do. We continue to put considerable resources towards investigating homicides and suppressing gang and organized crime activity along with other crime prevention awareness and education campaigns. In relation to sexual assaults, our sexual assault investigative unit was assigned an additional 35 new files in April, bringing in the year-to-date total number of files assigned to 150. This is on par with our total last year and we completed 14 sexual assault evidence kits in April, bringing in our year-to-date total to 42. In relation to child abuse, our child abuse unit reviewed more than 1,500 occurrences involving children in April alone. Of these, 246 were reviewed by the child abuse unit or referred to our lead on center partners for their potential engagement. And with that, I will turn it over to Deputy Topic.
Thanks Deputy Cook. And within the report that I submitted, there was a summary of the overall citywide crime training for April and year-to-date based on the five-year average. So hopefully that was helpful for members of the commission. So I won't be redundant in some of my comments, but just to emphasize a few things with regard to social disorder, we have seen an uptick in March that was trending and, and a slight decrease in April compared to the five-year average. In relation to that, there were significant increases observed in mental health related concerns in April. And year-to-date, we've seen those increase 24% compared to the five-year average. So we are seeing some, some increases there. With respect to the robberies, just following up on what Deputy Chief Cook was alluding to. We have had the buy sell robbery task force set up for approximately a half year now, specifically focused on for sale sites and people who are selling goods online and being robbed of their goods and/or money. Since January, they've had 69 files under investigation. We've written 91 judicial authorizations and executed 14 search warrants and laid 96 charges on 23 offenders. So some very good results as far as investigations there. There have been five incidents in May, three of which have been linked to the same offenders who were arrested after the search warrants last week. So we're seeing a bit of a decline in those kinds of offenses. So that's good for us to see. With respect to commercial break and enters, we have seen a bit of a trend toward construction site, home under construction break and enters in districts three and five involving two different offender groups that we've noted. And a number of those have been in district three targeting things like tools, copper pipe and wire. have been in District Three targeting things like tools, copper pipe, and wire. We've had smash-and-grab, tight-break-and-enters on the seventy-bath southeast corridor, targeting cash, debit machines, tablets, et cetera. They are basically continuing to work through those and have some good suspects in mind for those. By getting into some, there was a significant drug seizure in, made by the District Four Operations Team, where a significant sophisticated cocaine methamphetamine, that's no lab, was located in northwest Calgary. Also, search warrants executed in Calgary and one in Chestamere partnering with the RCMP. That resulted in a seizure of approximately five million dollars in street value drug, along with ten thousand dollars in cash during those search warrants. Two people were arrested and charged with seven offenses in relation to those crimes. With respect to ongoing LRT safety initiatives, we have a variety of operations occurring across the city. Six of the eight districts have operations running or proactive efforts focused on LRT safety and security, and we are partnering with Transit Security on collaborative efforts to increasing public safety and transit. They have continued with their Safety for All 2.0 program aimed at addressing crime and disorder on the LRT and trains. And we have established a working group to look at some crime prevention approaches to target hardening some of those locations. Inspector Scott Todd from District Five is our lead, who'll be working with Transit on that. Very recently, the city is also bringing together a group, a collective of partners, both within the city and across business units to work on that initiative. Lastly, I'll just focus on the Crime Prevention Week, which was in this month of May, ninth to fifteenth. Our Crime Prevention area put out proactive communication around various programs such as the nine PM routine, registering your bikes with the bike index, Safe Zone for Buy/Sell Transactions, and How to Stay Safe Online, as well as break and enter and personal robbery prevention. So I'll leave it there, and.
Chair, did you want to take questions on those three reports now, or do you want us to continue right on with 5.5?
I think it seems logical to take them now, if that's okay. I know we talked about going all the reports first, but if we could do these ones first, I think that's probably a good idea. So I will open up two questions from Commissioners, and see if there's. So if we're gonna do it the other way around, so we'll start with Commissioners to begin here.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, Deputy Chief Cook. Appreciate the report. I had a question regarding, you made a comment about the community, and that they've been very good in terms of providing support and providing information. Where would you say the gaps are? What are you missing from the community that would help you even further with these shootings and other incidents?
I think it's without question within prevention, I would much rather deter and prevent primarily young men from going down a path of organized crime and drug. I can tell you in my experience, even back in 2015, when we found ourselves in a very similar situation, the outcomes are not good for the people involved in this lifestyle. It's, they're either going to be killed, or they're going to go to jail. I can tell you, I wish we had more people who were involved in the lifestyle that wanted help exiting, but I can tell you, we have programs that are very rarely utilized. So specifically to your question, I would say not so much community, but community to identify ways to prevent the lifestyle from occurring. And then secondly, when it does occur, robust support systems to facilitate and encourage exit from the lifestyle.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioner Campbell.
Thanks very much, Chair. This is likely a question for Deputy Chief Topic. The shooting, the recent shooting in Buffalo, New York, was tragic, and as has been communicated by police, was in New York State, was motivated by hate, extremism, and racism. When I think about the intelligence that, on hate and extremism, that was gathered during the blockade in Coots and through the demonstrations in the Belt Line that, as you've articulated, unfortunately continue to occur, are we ripe for a similar situation like what occurred in Buffalo here in Calgary?
Thanks for the question, Commissioner. Certainly a tragic situation, south of our border, and one we've seen far, far too often. You know, I know we have a lot of intelligence holdings around the people that have been involved in a number of these protests, both locally here and elsewhere, and we continue to communicate with our partners around those types of things to try to predict whether it could happen. I think that's very challenging to do, but just to say that, you know, we have to be prepared for anything. And so our response to make sure that we provide a great, a high degree of safety in our schools and in our various locations where this type of thing could happen, and that we're trained to respond. I can tell you that our organization, from my experience, has one of the highest degree of capability to respond to those types of things in a very imminent manner, and we've seen examples of that even over the past couple of years where we've been able to intervene on a close call, we'll just call it that. So I am confident that we have highly-trained, highly-skilled people who can respond to that, but as far as the intelligence, we're always trying to get ahead of those types of things. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Commissioner, Counselor, welcome.
Thank you, Chair. Trying to figure, you know, to Deputy Chief Topic, Deputy Cook, either one of you might be able to take this one. And it's on a similar vein with regard to some of the shootings that we're seeing elsewhere, and then kind of the reflections that we see locally. So Buffalo, but then now you also have what happened in Texas, and so challenging thing for me to kind of like straddle through the news reports of the week, and it's, you hear what happened at Bona S High School, and then immediately a few days later, you see what happens in Texas. There's ample questions, sorry, make sure, there's ample, ample questions that we can take around that. But one of them really stands out from the town hall that we attended, can't even remember time, last week, where Menpe Chahal made a comment about the way that illegal guns are acquired. That really stands out to me in this particular conversation. He commented that in his time on commission, he came to some data set that discussed how most handguns that were available on the street were legally obtained and then stolen versus trafficked. And then again, to hear that the student at Bona S stole his gun as well, too, to hear about, you know, the gun store robberies in Medicine Hat as well. So this is a very, very, like, I'm working, like, it's a high-level question, but are the policies that are in place, we talk about how CPS is responsive to the criminal justice system and the policies that are in place in the federal government, but when we look at our laws, our gun laws, like just in your, just in your conversations, in your concept of what prevention is and how we intervene, like, are we, are we doing enough, right?
To get right to the Core Your Question, I would say it's evident with the violence that we're seeing across this country, and with the proliferation of crime guns, I think the obvious answer is no, we're not doing it. What's frustrating from my standpoint is that the vast, like, these crime guns, they're unlawfully possessed. They're unlawfully stored, and they're unlawfully used. So I think there's, there's laws that we currently have within this country that can address the gun violence and the crime within our communities, but we need that whole of government, that whole system of justice to come together to effect the required change, to keep our community safe. I can tell you that the vast majority of the people who we find who are being victimized, who are part of the ongoing conflict, we're well aware of who they are. It's not the first time we've dealt with. So I think, like, through the Commission and through Council, we have made significant investments in our response to investigating after the fact. It's the things in advance to deter, to stop people from getting into this lifestyle where the consequences are too significant. But I can tell you, the vast majority of people we deal with, those consequences, I don't think matter to them. I think, we've said it before, they're better to be caught with a gun by the police than to be without a gun and come across one of their rivals. So I think we have the laws on the books, but we need the system, the entire, the whole of system, worked effectively, Counselor.
I hope that answered your question perfectly, right? And honestly, I really appreciate just, just getting straight to it. I'm not good at that. Second question is a lot less heated, it's around traffic. So it's, well, just one of the, it's one of the smaller sections that Deputy Chief Topic gave in your report on just traffic safety. And when we look around the city, I'm hearing from just other communities, but we're seeing warm weather, street racing starting to show up, we're starting to hear kind of like noise complaints downtown with people stunting on Seventeenth, and just curious if there's an approach or some information that we might be able to anticipate coming into these warmer months.
You bet, Counselor. As far as residential traffic safety and concern from the public, we do have a mechanism for people to tap into our organization. If you go online, there's a way to submit concerns to the Residential Traffic Safety Program. I know Curtis, who leads our traffic area, can also speak to that. We receive numerous ones, which are then followed up by, whether it be photo enforcement and/or man or personnel enforcement to those type of concerns. So I think that's very beneficial, so we can focus our efforts where the problems are, because often they do. We do have some consistent challenges that we have to address from a district-by-district perspective, and certainly can tap in through the district commanders, too, if there are specific areas of concern, but Curtis, you have any?
Sure, I'll stand to that. So in my role, the other side of what my role is overseeing our traffic unit. And so the street racing that we're seeing and the speeds that we really experience on very high speeds, quite often we'll actually see a hundred kilometers over the speed limit. That's not a hundred kilometers, and it's a hundred, you had a hundred and fifty in a fifty kilometer zone. So we're just, as of last week, we've seen, we've seen some work from our prosecutors that anything over a hundred in that regard, we will have dangerous driving charges on that. At the end of the day, we're looking to work, very, I work with the Alberta Association Chief of Police, my counterpart in Edmonton. We're looking to have the laws within Alberta that will allow for seizure, so that there be, as opposed to just watching that, have that off, that individual drive away. So as Deputy Convention laws, the laws are, we're working on announcements and then advocating through the, certainly the Alberta Association Chiefs of Police, and with an eye on that. But in the meantime, what we are doing, we're very closely with the Alberta sheriffs, with our surrounding region, and on our city police and our districts, to make sure that we've got a full court press. You know, realistically, all of our, all of our fatalities within the city of Calgary are justified by the traffic unit. And in fact, the one most recent, the most tragic one, two weeks ago, in support of our investigative units. And so we're taking it very seriously, but we do have to make sure we have a strength in numbers approach to ensure that we retain our limited resources and make sure that the city of Calgary is as safe as possible for our roads.
Amazing. Thank you both, I think of three of you for those answers.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Wacca. There is two questions online. Commissioner Lynch-Parker, please go ahead.
Thanks, Chair, and good afternoon, everyone. I have two questions, and I think that they are for Deputy Chief Cook. The first related to the commercial robberies and the, the trend being higher in ten pharmacy robberies in May. I just wanted to clarify what number, what percentage of those involved repeat offenders. I, I thought that you had indicated that there was some individuals who were released by the courts and then had repeat offended, and I just wondered what the prevalence of that was.
Thank you for the question, and if you'll permit me, I'll speak in general terms.
Sure, yes, please.
I don't have those facts right in front of me, but we could certainly get those. I can tell you from the briefing notes that I receive on a daily, weekly basis, I would say the vast majority of the vendors, especially in around the pharmacies, pharmacies were well-known to us and were repeat offenders, young persons via, but the level of violence, again, that we have shown to Commission is absolutely egregious. So I would say the vast majority have pre, by their previous contact with the police or previous convictions or are under conditions.
Yeah, and I guess the obvious comment there, and it's probably maybe not something that you can comment on, is there legislative change needed in order to prevent that from occurring in terms of when these individuals are released?
My, my second question was in respect to the mental health concerns. Twenty-four percent is a, is a big number, and I just wondered if you could expand upon how the CPS is addressing this strategically, and, you know, I assume you're working with partners and how this fits in with the new alternative call-response model.
Thanks, Commissioner, for the question, and absolutely. As you, I think the Commission's been made aware, we have a partnership with 211 and Calgary 911 to have embedded 211 support right in the call center. So that's one initiative that's underway right now, and we're seeing some fairly good results there. And I don't want to speak for Deputy Chief McCallum, she certainly can chime in as well. The additional resources put toward the PAC teams, the Police and Crisis Teams, to support the intervention and supports for people in mental health crises is another initiative that we currently are doing. I think it is, you know, you look at that type of an increase in the symptoms that we would see that would lead or contribute to that. There are a lot of pressures for people that we've seen over the last couple of years, and certainly we're alive to that. And I think, too, people being concerned for family, friends, loved ones, that type of thing, are more inclined to make calls and have us be proactive in our interventions as opposed to reacting to that for the fact. But, so, Chair, Katie, have anything else you want to?
Thanks, Deputy. Thanks, thanks for the question. Good afternoon, everyone. In addition to what Deputy Topic talked about, we also have our MRT team that is now twenty-four seven. So when any members that deal with the number of the public who's going through a mental health episode or event, they're able to call into the Mental Health Resource Team before they take that individual to anywhere else. And of course, I've talked over the last couple of months of all the partnerships and initiatives that we have for the CEISA framework, and all the amazing initiatives that we're currently working on, and we will be coming forward with, hopefully in September. We're just putting some, some information together and communicating that continuous engagement with our partners and community members. But I think we'll be, I think, you know, people will be happy to see what it is that we're coming forward with, but still in the, still in the stages of just putting final pieces on some of those initiatives, but definitely geared toward our commitments to call diversion and alternative response, particularly dealing with people in crisis.
That's great. Thank you. Look forward to discussing the call diversion and response in September. Appreciate that.
Thanks very much. Commissioner Rosa.
Thank you. I just was wondering, you talked a little bit about the initiatives at the LRT stations. Can you provide your thoughts on the root causes for the increase in the issues at LRT stations? Like, when we look at it, is it increases in gang activity, increased homelessness, increased drug abuse? Or is this just getting more back to more normal pre-COVID levels of issues? It just seems like there's a really wide variety of issues at LRT stations, and I'm wondering if there's a trend to the root causes that needs to be better addressed through social initiatives.
Thanks for the question, Commissioner. I think it's a variety of factors. You know, certainly you have the addictions component to a drug use component, which, you know, for people using the LRT and transit system, that's just concerning to come across that type of activity when you're, you're, you're using public transportation, so that's one piece. You have vulnerable populations who've begun to use those locations, and I think it really stems back for several months prior to where there was, there was a need to find a place to be, and often it wasn't in the shelters for a lot of reasons, whether it be COVID, the pandemic, the safety, a lot of variety of reasons, so that there was a tendency to move to other locations, and transit was one of them. I, I think there has always been, or there generally has been, and there's a bit of research on crime and social disorder along transit lines, but that gets emphasized when it's more predominant, when there's less people using the system, and you see it, you see the forest for the trees a lot more. So it's a combination of things that I would say lead to it, and as far as root causes of what we need to deal with, I think really it's, it's an all-systems approach where it's not just policing, it's not just charging people with fair evasion and those types of things that are going to solve this problem. It's going to be collective work with our partner agencies to get to the root causes that lead to that. to, to get to the root causes that, that lead to that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the reports and the questions. There's one final report, which is the Anti-Racism Action Plan update, and so I'll turn it back over to you. Thanks.
Thanks, Chair. In a moment, Deputy McClellan will talk about the Superboard and the Iraq update. But you mentioned in your opening that this was the second anniversary of the murder of George Floyd, and just wanted to comment a little bit about about that particular incident and the implications for the Calgary Transit Service and why this worked and why what Deputy McClellan has, has been, or is going to talk about is so important. The tragic death of George Floyd sends shockwaves around the world, but we also acknowledge that there were other deaths as well involving youth supports that were prior to the murder of George Floyd. From this tragic death and others, we wanted to learn. And we committed to being relentless in our pursuit of dismantling systemic racism and becoming an anti-racist, equitable and inclusive police service. Think back to the demonstrations and the protests that occurred in the summer of 2020. And then, of course, the presentations of the hearings that were held here in our city. These things happen around the world, but there was very local impacts, very local flavor to what happened here. So we made a commitment at that time, City Council on September tenth, to do these things in 2020. So it wasn't a promise that was made at that time, it was one we knew was going to be an ongoing work to increase equity, diversity, inclusion and anti-racism, and to make sure that those principles remained at the forefront of what we were doing in Calgary Police Service. Every single member of our service, whether it be sworn civilian, certainly has a role to play, a vital role in this pursuit. And all Calgarians deserve and should certainly expect equitable and fair treatment from their police service. It's important to note, because of course there was some confusion, I think, acknowledging that systemic racism exists within CPS and institutions and policing, including ours, was not a personal attack and it wasn't the same as calling somebody racist. And I think that was something that, you know, was conflated for a while to the discussion, but it wasn't that at all. It was really about policies, procedures and systems that have existed for hundreds of years and the impact that those have, that really brought us to this point collectively. Our society in Calgary has changed demographically and it will continue to change demographically as we look into the future. We anticipate a future where that would very much be the case, and our service has to be equipped to serve an increasingly multicultural and diverse population. So the work of becoming racially equitable and inclusive is really about building capacities and capabilities individually and as an organization to, and to be able to engage with our communities more effectively to ensure that their needs are being properly. Our journey of becoming an anti-racist organization will provide additional professional tools to our members and to add to their belts that they already have as they work in the community every single day. The work of dismantling systemic racism is not, and, and it's, it's not easy work. And we knew that it wouldn't be easy work. I think nobody's surprised at that. But certainly over the last two years, our experience has been that it's, it's certainly hard work. But the work is really a choice that we make about who we are in the city and how we turn up and how we communicate, how we carry ourselves, and how we engage as a core fabric in our community with the people that we serve and protect. It's an acknowledgement of the vital role that CPS and policing has in our city to try to make our city a better place for us all. And when we falter and we will falter, we've certainly found that there's been times where we've had faced challenges. We've got to be willing to actually be, you know, pragmatic and honest about that situation, be able to speak candidly, to learn whatever we need to learn and acknowledge the hurt and learn the lessons and build the trust to move forward, to, to again, push forward for change for the better. I think all successful organizations really strive for excellence, and CPS is no different. In pursuit of that excellence, we continually strive to be better, to do better in our service and in support of our city and to be more racially, racially equitable for all members of our community. To that end, it's a, it's sort of the setup for this important work that Deputy McClellan is leading. But it's service-wide work. It's not, we've been having lots of discussions lately about the advancement of this work. Anniversaries are important, obviously, they're important for a bunch of reasons, but looking backward to what's been accomplished and where you've been, but also they provide an opportunity for them to look forward. And we've been talking about the fact that it's really important to make sure that it's not work that's being led in one particular mural, but led across the service, and, and it is everybody's work, and it's a continued work, and we continue to be committed to this important work. So that I'll hand it over to Deputy McClellan, and she will talk about the Superboard and the Iraq update for the past one.
Great, thanks, Chief. So as the chief said, I'll just give a couple of high-level updates on our external and internal committees and a couple of additional highlights. So in the past, we've heard we talk about the two consultants that we've recently hired and really pleased to share that they are fully embedded in our CPS Anti-Racism Team. And we've learned an incredible amount of information from them in a very short period of time. And they're helping us focus on our training, education, facilitation and language, and they will be key and will for internal and or external Iraq activities. We have our strategy document drafted, and we're working collaboratively with the additional consultants that we've hired by Action Dignity and Habitus, and their intention is to hear from the community members, various sectors and CPS employees. And those engagements are expected to begin later this summer. Our internal Iraq, again, we continue to meet with them monthly as we do our external Iraq. And we're going to do a bit of a restructuring with our internally, we're going to align them better with our external Iraq. And we're going to have them focus on policies and procedures and the implementation of our anti-racism workoff that we will be bringing forward in September. In addition, we have recently started our anti-racism webinars with our consultants and with Inspector Martin. And we're actually attending trades on a weekly basis with all of our frontline members. And the plan then will be to meet with all plus three, three thousand plus employees to have this conversation and to share this webinar. In addition to this, we've had several training and education programs have been launched. And the new Indigenous education program, which we shared some of the module and training with the police commission, is a, consists of fifteen monthly online learning sessions, and they will be followed up with in-class training as well. And the LGBTQ two-plus training program was developed in March of this year under the leadership and the assistance of the chairs and the advisory board through the gender and section, gender and sexually, sexual diversity board and the CPS Recruitment and Learning Division. As well, we talked about the stand-up of our new Indigenous Relations Team. And the immediate priorities, which I've talked about in the past, are the Members Advisory Circle, the Elder's Knowledge Keeper Circle, the Member Exchange Program with other tribal police services, and to explore a pilot Indigenous liaison program. Again, we've been fortunate to hire an additional consultant onto this team, Ms. Kelsey Reimer, who is Indigenous and has experience as a business strategist. Our Indigenous Relation Team continues to work with numerous partners in furthering our work towards truth and reconciliation, and we have numerous events coming up throughout the month of June. As well, you've heard me talk about the raising of flags at CPS headquarters, and we're hopeful to do that in June, and we'll be sure to share that through the media very soon. Our Superboard, many of you know, we meet with them quarterly, they're the chairs of all of our advisory boards. We had our last meeting with them in May, and our topics, our recent topics included ours, the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-six service plan and our budget, upcoming budget consultation, and we had some great conversation about that. Of course, we talked about the recent shootings and the robberies across Calgary and the prevention through community engagement. And that's my update for the month. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good overview and good context. Appreciate that. I'll turn over to commission members for questions. We'll start with Commissioner Campbell, please.
Thank you. I, I only, I only, it's only a bit of a draw because I know that I get, I get harassed for being first each time, but it's fine. First, Chief, I, I want to thank you for the comments you just made before the presentation by Deputy Chief McClellan. Those are important words for the service, the commission, the Senior Officers Association, CPA to hear and to understand. That's the struggle that I think we've been having as a set of leaders in communicating over the last year. So I was I'm really just pleased to hear those words from you and from the senior leadership team, and so thank you. To that end, one of the things that we've been working with and trying to wrestle with is how CPS engages with community as the plurality of Calgary shifts and changes and increases. To that end, I was quite fortunate to meet retired Lieutenant General Romeo Delaire recently, who has begun and has been quite successful with the training program for those on the front lines like CPS, but mostly internationally, with the right tools and training for working with those in protective care and particularly dealing with child soldiers. I know that both you and Deputy Chief McClellan also have the opportunity to meet with the retired lieutenant general, and I'm hoping that you can speak a little bit to the opportunity and a potential, and potential, and potential engagements if possible, knowing that Calgary has a significant population of those who are, who have lived the trauma in South Sudan and other, and other communities and other countries and are now experiencing intergenerational trauma in their families from what they experienced as child soldiers. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. And yes, the world is definitely small. I think at the graduation, we had an opportunity to talk about both of our experiences, and I think yours perhaps was at a luncheon, and as you mentioned, Deputy McClellan and I had the retired lieutenant general and his partner, we hosted them at West Winds, and that was actually a connection made through Youthlink as well. They're interested in the work done through Youthlink here in Calgary and well aware that we have a high population of community members who've probably had those experiences. And so also being aware of the most recent shooting we've had in the city there involving Mr. Chouelle and the fact that he'd, he'd been a child soldier as well. So that was, it was a great opportunity for us to meet and hear the work, the foundation and what the retired lieutenant general is doing. And you're right, he's actually developed a very, what appears to be a very intriguing program around that that would be, that would be helpful when you think of as I mentioned earlier, the diversity in our community and the fact that it continues to change, and that we have a future where it will become more diverse. And we need to understand these issues. It's critical for us to be able to provide the type of service that we want and need to, that we understand some of the barriers and challenges that people bring when they, when they arrive from other parts of the world, as they will continue to do. So we had that discussion about what that might look like. I know that the, the retired lieutenant is going to provide a proposal to us, which we'll look at down the line. I think that shouldn't be too far down the line, but very productive, meaning very high quality training, I believe. And we're well aware that we don't need to reinvent the wheel on these things. There's been some excellent, excellent work done by people who've worked in those fields. And certainly we want to leverage that where we can. So, so very positive, productive meeting, great to be able to meet him to discuss these important issues and issues that are important to Calgarians as well. So thank you for raising it. Anything that you might add, give it a go.
No, thank you very much. It would be great when we think of the suite of training that we're able to support within CPS, if we can look at some of this, what I think is being considered flagship, training of military, police, peacekeepers, security personnel and community groups who are often that first point of contact, which is what unfortunately we saw happen with the late Mr. Chouelle. And given, given their previous history and trauma and engagement as child soldiers. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. That's interesting information. Councillor Walcott? Any other questions with respect to the anti-racism update? Any online? Nope, don't see any. All right, then with that, I will express my sincere appreciation for the reports. I know it takes time to put them together. It's very helpful for us to know about the work that you're doing and, and all the, the efforts that are going forward. So with those pieces being finished, we'll move over to the next pieces of the public agenda. Executive Director's report. There is no verbal update for the executive director's report this month. It was very brief and in the report. So we'll move into hearing from commissioners who represent the commission on various associations and committees. And I will start with, I guess I'll start with myself. I wanted to just give a brief update on the Calgary Youth Police Foundation, which I sit on. And interesting, there's a report there in the materials, but they recently received a quite hefty grant from the province to expand the exceptional programs that they do in the city of Calgary to other communities outside of Calgary. And I guess the comment that I would make to the programs is it's interesting, as, as you mentioned Deputy Chief Cook, that prevention is, is one of the keys to reducing crime rates overall. And the, the, the programs that the Canadian, the youth foundation offer are all about prevention with kids either in different levels of school and helping find them, know who they are and provide them with alternatives to avoid things. So if you want, the website's great, has all the programs outlined there, but it's really good work and aimed at prevention. So that's the report on that one. And then the other one is the, the next one is Commissioner Sipiki, the Canadian Association of Police Departments.
My report is there, Chair. I don't have anything to add unless there's any questions.
Any questions, Commissioner Sipiki? No. Then we'll move on to Commissioner North again. Are there any updates you'd like to add for the Alberta Law Enforcement Response Teams, Civilian Advisory Committee?
I have no updates to present this month, but I will have tons next month.
Thank you very much. Most of these committees meet relatively infrequently, so there's not always an update. So thank you for that. That is the end of the presentations and reports for today. We'll now invite public guests who are registered to speak to do so. One of our staff will invite you to unmute yourself one at a time. And I'd just like to comment on the process we're using. We've recently changed our practices around public participation to provide more opportunity for people to get a response to their questions or concerns. At the same time, we've tried our best to balance the desire to hear from the public with the need to keep meetings at a reasonable length. Those of you who shared with the commission a written presentation, those have been shared with the commission in advance of this meeting with their materials. Those of you who registered to provide a presentation will have four minutes to speak, followed by commissioners having an opportunity to ask brief clarifying questions. And those who register to ask a question will have two minutes to speak, followed by a member of the commission or the Calgary Police Service having two minutes to respond. I would ask that you keep your comments to the topic you provided when you registered. And we also cannot discuss any complaint about specific employee of the service, interaction with the police specifically. If you'd like to discuss a complaint against an officer or other employee, please contact the Public Complaint Director or the Calgary Police Service Professional Standards Section. Finally, a reminder to members of the media that we'll hear from the public first, and then we'll hold a media availability for you after adjourning the public meeting. So with those comments made, I'll ask our Communications Director Corwin to please put through the first speaker.
Thank you, Chair. Our first speaker is Jocelyn Keith Asante from the Calgary Alliance for the Common Good, and she has a question.
Good afternoon. I'm Jocelyn Keith Asante. I'm here representing the Calgary Alliance for the Common Good. The Calgary Alliance, with its numerous Indigenous members and advisors, are asking the Calgary Police Commission to comply with the missing and murdered Indigenous women, girls, and Two-Spirit Calls for Justice released on June second, twenty nineteen. On May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, we met with Deputy Chief McClellan and members of her Community Services Section team along with Superintendent Ryan Alef of the Major Crime Section. We learned that Indigenous persons make up forty percent of all missing persons in Calgary. From the twenty sixteen census, Indigenous people were three percent of Calgary's population, population. From the 2016 census, Indigenous people were three percent of Calgary's population. And yet today make up forty percent of all missing persons in Calgary. It's a fact that with Indigenous liaison officers building relationships with the Indigenous community in each district. There will be less need for frontline police to police them. In addition, these relationships will support the major crimes Murdered and Missing Indigenous Persons Unit. Address cases of murder and missing Indigenous persons, not only faster, but solve these cases. The Alliance wants to see at least two new hires in the Indigenous Relations Office, with two more being processed by September. We believe this will offer the support the CPS needs with these cases by building relationships in the Indigenous community. We will be meeting with Chief Newfeld next week on Monday, May 30th, to share this request and continue building our relationship with the CPS. Will the Commission ensure that these Indigenous liaison officers hires are supported? Thank you.
Thank you for that question. We will support the service as they make these decisions going forward. I'll turn it over to Deputy Chief. Katie, if you would like to speak to this.
Sure. Thanks. Thanks very much, Chair. And hi, Jocelyn. Thanks. Thanks for your comments. So we're very fortunate. We have had ongoing meetings with the Common Alliance. And as Jocelyn has pointed out, myself and the chief have a meeting with the Common Alliance next Monday. We continue to talk about, you know, their concerns. We think that we've made some progress with the standing up of our Indigenous Relations Team and the resources that we have committed to that. And we've had some great feedback from the Common Alliance, which would sincerely appreciate it. Of course, many of you will recall that when we had our growth positions, we in fact did ask for and were supported for a couple of. Additional members to go into that area. And I think all of us who are at the table here today know the issues with respect to resources and staffing. And so we do have those positions committed to that team. And it's just as a result of the reality today that we just don't have those additional resources to put into that team. But we will continue to meet and work with the Common Alliance and continue to move forward with our commitments to the truth and reconciliation recommendations. And as Jocelyn has said, we will meet with them next Monday to have a follow up conversation.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the question. We'll move on to the next question.
Thank you, Chair. Our next speaker is Mr. Eddie Su, and he has a question related to the Asian, or sorry, the Asian Advisory Committee.
Please go ahead, Mr. Su.
Oh, thank you. Good afternoon. So today is a further, further. Follow up with my comment that had been raised last section of the meeting. So that would be, how does the Calgary Police Service? Tackle the increasing charge of Asian community being increasingly being the victim of the systematic racism of CPS? And I was very delighted as I approached by representative, high rank representative from the CPS. And direct me to try to get the, get into the Calgary Police Service Asia Advisory Report. But later on, I find some uncertainty about like how this Asian police advisory board. Work as they're supposed to. So the context would be, I was told by the. People in charge that there's already two members sitting there for more than ten years representing the Chinese community. But as I had done extensive search on both internet and through the community, I cannot find any information about. Who those advisory board members are representing the Chinese community. Let alone can I find any other ways to see how they reach out to the Chinese community? To collect concerns and feedbacks so that they are effectively representing the Chinese community as they're supposed to. So my question would be like, how the CPS actually makes sure those. Advisory board and those advisory board members work as they're supposed to, like. More specifically, like, what is the procedure of selecting and re-electing those advisory board members because they are sitting there for more than ten years? Second, like, what procedures or measures are adopted? To ensure these advisory board members are faithfully and diligently doing their job of collecting concerns and feedbacks from the communities. And communicate them to the CPS. So yeah, that would be my question. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that question, and I will turn that also over to Deputy Chief McClellan.
Thanks, Chair, and thanks, Eddie, for your questions and your comments. So I'm sure, as I've shared previously, we do meet monthly with all of our advisory boards. We have great relationships with all of these boards and we do in fact recognize that. The hate crimes have increased in that community and in other communities. I can tell you that my team has met regularly with many members of the community and we have ongoing conversations with the advisory board. We've, some of my members have invited many of the members of your community for one-on-one coffee meets for additional information. We've actually got a town hall planned coming up for in the fall. And with respect to the conversations that happen monthly at those advisory meetings. We believe and I believe that the information that is discussed and shared there does go back, does go back into the community. Because when we have those conversations, they in fact bring feedback back. All of the advisory boards act differently. Some of them have different terms of reference. So I'm not sure particularly how this this board is communicating with community members. But I can assure you that they come to our monthly meetings. There's great conversations that go back and forward. They bring information, we share information, and we believe that it is that it is shared with the community. So. Eddie, I'm not sure if I answered all of your questions, if there was something else that was exciting there?
Thank you, Deputy Chief, for your information. Yes, I think there have been, there must have been. Effective measure to ensure those should be happen. That should be happening. But as a matter of fact, as I, not only myself, but I also like surveying. Pretty extensive number of the community. We actually had no find any effective feedback or like find any ways to reach out to those. Those so-called advisory members representing our community. So I definitely do not doubt that CPS had done a great job and setting up those, setting up those. Mechanism to ensure effectiveness are represented. But my concern or the concern from the community is, actually, it does seem that the existing members doesn't. Doing their job and I'm not quite sure like how the people, the officer in charge actually are holding them accountable for it. So the feedback from the communities, actually, we didn't see they are doing their job and we didn't even. Know who they are and of course, let alone how they are able to reach out to us and collect our concerns and feedbacks.
Thank you. Is there something you'd like to add to that?
Sure, that just. Yeah, thanks, Chair. Thanks, Eddie. I'm more than happy to to meet with you offline if you wish. It's a great takeaway to, for me to take back to all of the boards to talk about how is it that we're actually communicating back in there? Is there information that we could possibly share on our website? But I can also share with you that every single time that we meet, there's a summary of those minutes, there is action items, there's agenda items, there's follow ups. So I would be more than happy to meet with you offline and talk about that. And take back your recommendation to have some more visibility into your board and to all of the boards through our website or through some other means. So, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, and thank you very much for raising that. And I know you've been attending meetings before, and so I appreciate your, your consistency with coming forward and. And bringing that concern forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair. That's all the public speakers we had registered for today.
Alright, thank you. And so thanks to everyone for joining us today and for those good questions and comments. So with that, I would like to adjourn the public portion of this month's commission meeting. Thank you to everyone for coming today. Calgary Police Service members and members of the public can now. Leave the meeting and take a bit of a break. Commissioners may choose to take a break as well. The chief and I will stay on to take questions from the media. And commissioners and presenters will return for the in-camera portion of the meeting. Expected in about fifteen minutes, a little bit longer than that. I'll have to figure out what the time times on the agenda and we'll. So thank you very much, and we'll get ready for the media.
Thank you, Chair. And just a note for people in the room, if you are able to move where you're going to go now, that would be great, just to ensure clean audio for our media partners. We do have a couple of people registered for questions and then we'll allow anyone who didn't register in time to raise their hand. The first person in the line is Adam Toy from Global. So Adam, I'll give you permission to speak. Please go ahead.
Thanks so much for taking my questions. A couple of questions. First question about information that. Chair Cornet said earlier about the thin blue line patches. Wondering if that is effective for all uniforms, including dress uniforms for CPS members? And also wondering if, 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 if there, well, yeah, I'll just, I'll start with that question. Is this for all, all uniforms or just street uniforms? Is dress uniforms included?
Thanks very much for the question. Our directive is that the patch will not be worn by on-duty members. And there are other considerations that we may discuss afterwards, but at this point. Our concern is with members of the community interacting with on-duty members and other members of the police service. That they are not in a position where they're uncomfortable. So that's the underlying. Reason for our decision. And we, at the same time, recognize that the thin blue line is. Is used by many members of the service to honor the fallen and for all of the community service they provide. So the, the, those things are, have to be held together. And at this point, it's. The directive is for members who are on duty not to have the patch on with them or visible. So with that, I'll ask the chief if you have anything to add to that.
No, the direction that was put out by the service chair was consistent with that. It's really around. The patches on on-duty members and that regardless of whether you're wearing CPS working uniforms or whether you're in plain clothes. If you're a member that's deployed in plain clothes, that essentially means you're uniform. And as you say, you're interacting with the public. So that that direction applies to both.
Thank you, Adam. Do you have a follow up?
Yes, I'm wondering if, I know that at a previous meeting, there was talk about. Perhaps enacting some sort of a social media policy for commission members. I'm wondering if there's any updates on movement on that.
Yeah, we're working ahead on a specific policy around social media. At this point, the, the, the understanding that the commissioners all know that they are. Meant to support the work of the Commission and relationships within the community. So that's, that's the directive. The communication generally come through. The chair, that is myself, or the appropriate member of the Commission. With respect to building a very specific social media policy, we're still working on that, and that is to come in the next number of months.
Okay, thank you, Adam. We will now move on to Bill Kaufman. You should have the ability to speak.
Yes, hi. And this is for Chief Commission. I should say Chairman of the Commission. Apparently, the Calgary Police Association has, their head of the Calgary Police Association has. Instructed their members to remove the patches, the thin blue line patches from their duty uniforms. What can you tell me about that? And you know, what's your, what's your understanding about that? And what's your response to that? To that move by, by President Orr?
Sorry, I'm not sure I understand what the exact question is.
Yes, now apparently we're hearing that Mr. Orr has. Told his members to remove the thin blue line patches from their service uniforms. I'm just wondering what your, if you're, if you understand, if you've heard that. That if you've heard that, and, and what's your response? What's your comment on that move by Mr. Orr?
I, I will just reiterate what I said earlier is that the directive from the Commission. Is that on-duty service members will not wear the patch as of May 31st or earlier. And so. Beyond that, what the. President of the Association says and how they manage that, I think that the chief is responsible for. Working through that with the members of the service over the next few days. And that's a conversation I believe will be held between the chief and the president. Chief, is that accurate?
Yeah, that's fair. We've been in discussions, as you know, and I think we said from the beginning that we had hoped to get to a place of voluntary compliance with respect to removal of the thin blue line. And so based on, on discussions and lots of good faith that's gone on over the last number of weeks, we were recently able to get there. And so I think it's very positive development and I think it goes well going forward with some of the ongoing work that we're going to do. So I'm pleased with the development and happy to see that happen. Thank you.
Any further questions, Bill?
Oh, that's good.
Excellent. We will go back to Adam Toy. And then if any other members of the media on the call do wish to ask a question, please just raise your hand and we'll call on next.
Yeah, thanks so much. I have a few questions coming in from the newsroom as, as well. Question for, for the police chief regarding the Bowness High School incident. I know that Deputy Chief Cook spoke a little bit about means of, or the importance of prevention in. In terms of gun violence and, and, and younger people. I'm wondering if there's any indication, and also he spoke about. Illegal guns and where those may be coming from. I'm wondering if you have any insight on whether or not the firearm that that student. Brought into the high school was obtained by illegal means.
I don't have that insight, Adam, but I would just say that obviously any access that young people have to restricted weapons like that or any, any kind of firearms, frankly, that could come into a school. Ought to be an area of concern for all of us, and it certainly is. So I know that that will be part of the investigation to determine the origins of that firearm and how it came into the possession of that young person. And what the motivations were for bringing you into the school. But I, but I don't have the insight right now as to exactly the circumstances under which he came to possess it.
Any further questions, Adam?
Yeah, one last question. Again, for the chief, I know that you earlier had comments about. This being the second anniversary of the, the death of George Floyd. I'm wondering, and you and your leadership took a very anti-racist. Stance very early on. I'm wondering if two years on, two years later, if you can speak to any appreciable change of on the. Street, of policing on the street. Recognizing this, 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 this racial reckoning, as so many people were calling it. How has policing in Calgary changed since the death of George Floyd?
Yeah, thanks. That gets a great question. So I think there's been a lot of changes to policing in Calgary based on the, the position that we took. In relation to systemic racism and the incident involving George Floyd. I think at a high level, I think we engage differently with community than we did. You know, I think the Calgary Police Service has always had a, a long history of being able to positively engage with community. But like I say, now the, the substance of the discussions around key policies and programs and areas that. That frankly, we had not been talking about before, and maybe we hadn't been thinking about them before. So I, so I think that's a pretty major change. When you think about our advisory boards that have been developed. And in the way that we engage those now, not just, not just the new ones, but the ones that we've had around for a long time. I think that's, that's really critical, you know, discussing. I think that's, that's really critical. You know, discussions there, talk about everything from reviewing processes and, and systems around things like recruiting and training and the type of training that we provide as we discussed here earlier. So I think those are important pieces that have certainly been built on. I think we've worked and added a lot of employees, some of them in a consultant for, role, and then, then others in terms of employees added to the diversity of the Calgary Police Service as well, working in this area. You know, we see lots of internal campaigns now, the talk about the experiences of some of our racialized employees. And we're doing things that two years ago we didn't do to hear the stories and the experiences of our racialized employees, which I think is, is really important. I think when we come to things like our citizen satisfaction survey that the commission does. You know, in the past, I think we looked at the, the number, whatever the number of people that were satisfied with the, the police service and said, well, okay, that's really good. We've got, you know, it's ninety-four or ninety-three or eighty-eight or whatever the number is. Now we're actually focused on the other side of that. We're saying, you know what? That's great that we've got the foundation built with a, with a large majority of folks. But what about the people that aren't being served? And what do we need to hear from those people so that we can change what we do to be more equitable and inclusive? And so I, I think just our orientation toward these things has changed a lot. Tangibly, when you talk about, you know, what's happened policing in the community, I think if we look at the CICIP program and the changes that have been made to, to things like the crisis response model. And now granted, some of these things remain in flight and they're still in development because as it turns out, they're not, they're not easy things to change, particularly during a global pandemic. But you know, we built up the, the pact to the co-responder model as Deputy McClellan referred to earlier. We, we built up capacity in the dope team in the city. And so if you think about the number of calls that police officers don't go to now that those, that the dope team goes to, where we, we're dealing with vulnerable Calgarians who are needing assistance, but not necessarily police assistance. So I, I think we're, we've, we've been open very early to looking at how that crisis response model changes. I think Deputy Topic referred to the fact that we've got two-one-one embedded in nine-one-one right now. So you know, we see a future where when you call nine-one-one, you hear, you know, police, fire ambulance or mental health. And so there's that fourth option there for another kind of response to come. So this is actually work that's going on across North America. And so we're, we're closely plugged into what our partners are doing as well. Because I think a lot of police agencies are, are working down this road to create a more responsive and a more equitable crisis response model. And so, you know, it's good. Some of us are having success. Some of us are having challenges. We're all learning from what's happening. And we're all incorporating those learnings to the benefit of the community. So I have lots of good stuff going on, but, but it's hard work. I can tell you, there's, it's, there's, there's times where there's still frustrations and we understand that. But it's in those relationships, I think, that we have and, and our long-term commitment to them is, is where the magic happens. And so our folks are really, really deeply dedicated to their community. And as I say, the community in Calgary is not going to, to get less diverse. It's going to become more diverse. And we're going to position ourselves there to be the police service for every Calgarian.
Thank you.
Excellent. Well, thank you everybody. That concludes our immediate availability. Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. We will adjourn the public session of the, this month's commission meeting and return in about twenty minutes. So everyone can take a bit of a break. Thank you very much. Thank you for everybody else out there who attended as well.